Just for the sharing.
That's what I was gonna say, yeah.
Yeah, those have been ordered for awhile.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they finally came.
Well, thank you.
Yeah. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried unanimously. Sign and pass it down. Just part of this one?
Yeah.
I'll sign this one.
Send it back down there.
Yeah, that does.
Oh, is it on the back?
Yeah. It's on the back too.
Uh, there's probably another one underneath of that one.
Oh. It's, you can take it down there for. Disapprove over here. That one under there too.
Yeah.
Okay. Hold all the opposite direction.
Yeah, we'll go hand over, but let it prove or?
It's approved. Yeah, it says disapprove up here.
Josh.
There's one free yet.
They handed to you without signing?
Yeah, you did.
Give it all here, Mitchell.
We'll just toss them around until we get enough.
Yep, and just keep passing them along. Sooner or later, we'll get them all signed.
Jack, did you vote no on this, or did you say on the other side?
I thought you said the right side. Did they?
No. They're tricky, they move the As and then As around.
This is.
Disapproved.
Okay.
I didn't think you voted no, but I didn't know I was missing something. Okay, that's everyone.
There you go. Except Kami.
He's on that page.
No, you don't get out, you get to sign that one.
That's under there.
Almost done here.
Almost as if I wasn't the last one to walk in.
We're done.
I think we got them all.
We are up two. Years of service award. Adam Miller, fifteen years?
He looks way too young than any of fifteen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You sure that's right?
That's right.
Hey, congratulations. Your paper of wills. I will buy that, he always busts you. Give five. One, two, three. Here for awhile, forty, we'll see.
Abate of Iowa. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve the fireworks for abate? I would do that, do I have second? Second by Plath, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried unanimously. Discussion decision approved cigarette permit for rolling cigars of Heartland LLC. Brittany has already paperwork done?
Yeah, and he'll be sending two of them, one that finishes this year, and then one for next year.
Had a trailer.
Yeah.
Set up someplace that they can, oh, school to cover up.
Yep, I mean, it's a dark dream.
Is that a council block? Would someone like to make the motion to approve the cigarette permit for rolling cigars of Heartland LLC? So, motion by Plath, do I have second?
I have second. You can take Josh's.
Josh?
Yeah.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried unanimously.
Waterline second.
Yeah. Another one?
Oh, yeah.
Anybody have any questions on the transfers? Everybody had a chance to look at them? If there are no questions on the transfers, let the record show that we acknowledge the transfers made by the auditor. We are up to discussion decision on time sheet software. Derek's coming in.
All attention.
Yep.
So, I'm coming out of the department head meeting last week, and actually going back about a year, maybe a year and a half, I don't know, I spent a while. We're gonna talk about doing electronic time sheets. Couple of departments already use them for tracking those. It's a easy web based system, there's an annual fee to doing it. The attorney's office uses the Doug's office here in the building use it. Our department use it for tracking time. On the setup fee from solutions, which is our main county software, is somewhere above six thousand, between four and six thousand dollars to get that portion set up. And then our annual fee to have all the employees up and running is about sixty-five hundred to seven thousand a year. And that's for a hundred and five full-time employees and then for some part-time employees.
Derek, what do we pay now, for the ones that have it now?
Twelve hundred is what we're paying right now, so.
So that'll be on top of the twelve hundred?
Uh, no, that would.
Place in twelve.
Correct.
Okay.
So. We haven't had full department head support, some department heads want it, some don't. I know Doug has some challenges with this folks out in the field using it. Able to do that successfully could be a problem both for IT and for his staff, so. Maybe excluded that in our.
But that employee count would have. That that would include secondary voting.
Correct, yes, if you just, if you decided to.
Right.
Well, that hundred and five employees is the wrong number.
Well, if if OR decided to include this department in that, yes, it would be.
Think it'd be kinda hard because they don't have internet connection at the shop.
Correct, some guys have smartphones, some don't.
Yep.
So. The application. All the application is not liable.
We talked about it at the department, but I think we agreed that we would start with, if we, if you guys decided to start it, we would start it without secondary voting and possibly integrate that later if they decided to.
So the sixty-five hundred would be a wrong number?
It would be less than that, and you know, the question is, is there value there? And what? I don't wanna keep day prices, uh, days, so. It's up to you guys, what you wanna do, this is not my decision, so.
So what do they have to do, they have to? Fuck in on their computers?
Yep, they either do it on their computer or on their phone, either way. Uh, we have, we talked about two different methods, the first method would be, yes, an actual punch in, punch out on their computer, that would be one option, some departments. I was department, my department, that's how we deal with it, and Doug's office looks the same way. The other discussion was doing it the same way that your spreadsheet sounds, where instead of having a spreadsheet, someone writing it out on that spreadsheet, they would go to the webpage, put in. I clocked in at eight AM, I clocked out at four PM on Monday, I clocked in at AM, four PM on Tuesday. And then the auditor's office would be able to view that on the webpage, instead of getting a hard copy, so. That's the way that goes.
They have to actually do that on the computer here, they couldn't do it from a.
Over. Uh, they could do it from home unless we forced it to be in one of the buildings, but by default, it could be any computer, and that's cell phone too. Yep, and we could, we could lock it down, so, and grab the GPS location of the phone, so if they were in Mexico and they locked in, we would, no different Mexico type of deal. But that would be appropriate. Log in from Mexico?
Probably not, no, no. Not saying.
Yes.
Should we actually in the building?
Or.
Being the, your department and a couple of departments are already using that software. Sorry, is that cost is figured, are they already figuring that? And they would already be part of that program, right, or no? I mean, you're like, say your department is already paying for.
Yeah.
That whole portion of that fifty, three hundred or whatever.
So this sixty-five hundred to seven thousand, you would take twelve hundred off of that to get the total, and it does dollars. Uh, departments were not included, it would be less than that.
Yes. And so my question, I mean. It was about talking about the hours, I mean, basically, most of where. That's kind of out, but they're not really paid hourly, it's salary. So I mean, how many, just appears a handful of people do have. One, that's on.
One, two.
Yes, one, two that be paid hourly.
Yep.
Cause I mean, the thing is, that's my question, is it really worth it when you think about most costs, most were paid on salary and.
Well, the deputies are still paid on, like, based, based on hourly salary. So they still should work the hours, and, I mean, they can't not, not come in and work just because you're a deputy. So in my mind, they're still an hourly employee unless.
I think that would be kinda similar with the EMS as well.
Yeah, it'll be the same.
So this would include the EMS?
Uh, that sixty-five hundred does not include EMS. We, we got these numbers before EMS was coming in more.
So, and Bill, did you plan on using this for EMS?
We can have some kind of system to track for hours.
Yeah. I think it is.
So if, if secondary roads doesn't be part of it, then EMS coming in would maybe fill in some of those.
A few.
Those numbers, yeah.
Is it? Cost effective? Are we saving money somewhere doing this? Other than doing time sheets?
I don't know that we're saving money, it automates the system, brings us into this century instead of filling out time sheets, you know, paper time sheets. The, the yearly concern is, is a concern of mine, I didn't realize we would be paying such a large amount for, for years. So, it, it is, that is a concern of mine also, so.
Are, are the physical time sheets not? It's not working, or?
They are, it's.
Or why, why is it the?
It, it's just that. You have to wait for them to come in, which, you know, could be the same thing if it was automated too, is, you know, we're waiting for everybody to get the time sheets in, that happens every month. You probably have the same situation that was articulated to.
Melissa.
There's any, I mean, Melissa goes to the time sheets, she has to input all of that for every employee that gives a time sheet. And so if it were automated, that would free her up for other things, I guess that's your same, I don't know if you can put a cost in that, but that would be the same.
Yeah.
And, and you know, to, to Mr. Plath's point, uh, yeah, I mean, that's kind of an odd thing, but we report the time anyway, you know, so we made sure that each one of the employees, even though they've been paid a salary, you know, they still have to report them out, so it's waiting to try everyone. Um, you know, without having them to fill out those paper time sheets, so, yeah, I think, to me, when I was talking about it in the department head meetings, I think that's, that's where you're saying. You know, freezer up or something else, uh, I think there's still gonna be some oversight, but not. Which time would you estimate that would save, Melissa?
A lot of our employees are salaried, so. What she's inputting is gonna be, you know, vacation, sick leave, that kinda stuff, so I, I would have to ask her.
So Derek, on this, on this invoice, it's got an annual total of sixty-five, seventy, ninety-six, then it's got order total of forty-five, fifty-four, sixty-seven. So is that a government discount for price, or what's?
The sixty-five hundred?
Which, which number?
The forty-five, fifty-four, what's that number?
It, it says annual total, order subtotal, and then grand total, and.
Where are you saying that?
On that far right column.
Yeah, just. Which number we actually?
Uh, that is not what I am looking, oh, so that's prorated, so that was because we're in the middle of our contract, so the actual annual total would be the sixty-five hundred.
Okay.
And again, that number is old, that one's probably stale, so we're probably looking at seven thousand-ish, is what my guess would be.
Oh, so this was, okay, with the start date would have been back in? Nine twenty-eight.
Yeah.
Yeah, we talked about this funny miracle.
Yeah, we'll get her, yeah, cause I'm, how come we're using, we'll, from Texas, is, you can't use anything from solutions or something that we already have?
This is just the webpage and then the cell phone application, and then this dumps into solutions, so.
It does.
Solutions has to write a, an interface for it, that's the point, six thousand to get started, and then once that's done, then this will come over into solutions. Is what it wants.
So it does merge?
Correct.
Is there any other platforms that would do the same thing?
There's another platform called RT Vision, it's a little more expensive than this, I think it's another fifteen hundred, two thousand, or the ten bucks most. Again, it's, it's not an IT decision, right, this is up to the department, it's up to what they, help you. For their sales.
What do you think, Nick?
I, I mean, it's been something I've been talking about for awhile. I don't know if many of the employees know much about it at this time, and here, like some things. There's not a lot of information shared, you know, with the employees also, so. They might wanna know a little more about it.
Melissa, you're gonna do this. What's your opinion? Right now, you're doing it all off of paper. Time sheets.
But I don't enter time hourly employee, I only enter it for nineteen people. I only have nineteen hourly.
So if, if we.
So I have no salary, I don't put any time.
You don't?
So if we got this, do you have any idea how much time that would save you, or any? Ballpark, general idea? A lot, not a lot?
Not a lot.
For nineteen people.
Well, that's.
The jailers are all, there's twelve of them or so, they're all hourly, and I can keep their payroll in an hour, so, and they're the ones I can.
And we would, we would have EMS coming on, which would change that count, but.
I only have four staff, I. But, that's, that's my. Either way, I'm, I'm not against it, but kinda like, you know. There are some of the ideas with employees as well, and more about it. If it's a time saver. Whatever, majority of departments. Either way, it doesn't really affect me and our employees, so, what we're doing now is working as well.
Have you ever done a demo with this?
Yeah, we did several demos, I was thinking about how we would make it work. Except some departments want to allow their employees full edit access, so they would go in and manually put need for a torrent for, and then some departments want block in, block out, block in, block out. Uh, there's no consistency across the departments on that, and I think we did a vision, or a demo, RT Vision as well, uh, so we did a couple demos about a year ago on options.
So if you approve of this, would you have them all be consistent? On the application? Or use of it?
I can't, it's, I'm just trying to department.
Well, it's just a question that we should know.
I guess my opinion was, would be, there should be consistency if, if you do that to some degree. But I didn't. I didn't realize we already had some usement and some not, and all that.
We could set up by department as well, if you guys choose to have it that way, so we could accommodate each department and what they wanna do with their departments.
And that might be a better option if we only do it for the people that actually are hourly, I mean. I don't, I guess, I don't need it, my paycheck doesn't depend on how everyone else's salary would be the same thing, so I don't know why we would pay forty bucks a, or forty-three bucks a year for every salaried person. Can we break it out that way?
Can I, or can I make a motion to? Not move forward with time sheets offer?
You can.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's my motion.
What's the motion?
I have to not. But I guess since all, some, some of you already use it, how, how do I word that emotion?
Well, you got a motion, let's, let's get a second on it now, so we can have discussion.
He thinks that. Yeah.
Do I have a second on Josh's motion?
That was Carter's.
Or Carter, I'm sorry.
I- is that how you actually want your motion though? With your question at the end?
You wanna say not move forward with additional time sheets?
Maybe that, that's what would have been better wording.
Yeah.
That's what I would get, get.
Okay, so your motion would stand that you do not wanna go?
I don't wanna take any away from the department that's already used it.
Any further. Not go any further with the software.
At, at the moment.
Okay, so I have a motion on the floor, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Josh? Discussion. Now that we have a motion, let's discuss the motion, it's not going forward.
Our employees and should not start using time, but. How many, how many it's more?
I have nineteen hourly employees. That ain't under time.
About all nineteen or killing on a time.
Not on the time.
So.
Would that be beneficial if they all were?
I don't know how much time it would save. I, I don't know anything about the system.
Well, nineteen, how many are?
So, in your motion, Josh?
Carter.
Or Carter, I mean, if the jail would like to go to the system, would you be against it?
If they wanted to, that's not much fun.
So all we're doing, all your motion is saying that you do not make, wanna make it mandatory.
Right.
Well, that's, that's.
Yeah, that's, I.
Yeah.
That's got a question, yeah.
I need your motion, so I don't have time to discuss it, but I just wanted to, so, so it's clear. My office uses the, the time box younger, okay, but we still do the hourly paper every month, it doesn't automatically report. So, you know, I guess, first thing I'd like to, to find out, if I could, is why do we do those hourly forms?
Yeah.
Well, well, why do we fill those out, I mean, if, if we're not going to worry about keeping track of time, then why would fill those out? We've been doing that for twenty-four years as far as I've been twenty, twenty, I, I mean, you do that every month, that's the, that's the tedious thing, I don't know what Judy does, I mean, how she keeps, goes through that, but. But, you know, so, that's, that's kind of, every month, regardless of the person is an hourly employee or a salaried employee, we check day eight, day eight, day eight. So for, you know, those types of things, what, the reason I went to time clocks, uh, the, the software, was so I could keep track of that time, otherwise you're filling out calendars, or I don't know what you do in your office, keep track of your employees' time, uh, do you?
I, I have a calendar, yeah.
So you write on the calendar each month, so it's here, so it's here, I mean, it, it's a way to reduce the, the tediousness of that, that's, that's why I went to, because then I can just go on the computer, and I can say, okay, here, 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 because they clock, they can clock down. So, but yet we still do those each month, fifteenth of each month, we have to have those time sheets in, but the way it sounds, I mean, if they're salaried, why do we even worry about those hours, I know why I do, because I wanna make sure that they're there working so that we can tell what's vacation and what's, uh, what's, uh, sick leave, all right? Or other types of beneficial leave, so, yeah, I don't know, I mean, I agree, it's probably not much of a cost savings. It's just, you know, reducing that tediousness of the, of the day, and that's a once a month idea, so, uh, I just didn't wanna go to that old. Sorry, the old fashioned calendar is hard down the time sheet, not, not, not implying anything Judy, but it's just to me trying to make it more efficient. So then what that would do is, instead of, you know, those paper time sheets each month, that each department has to fill out to make sure, you know. So then what that would do is instead of, you know, those paper time sheets each month that each department has to fill out to make sure, you know. Johnny was here and Jill was here and, okay, make sure all of that, it's right in the software, it gets dumped right to, we check it once a month on the software. Because the time is there, because it's recorded, and and that's what you're reducing. And and, you know, is it gonna hurt my feelings if you know, I mean, maybe, I understand, it's a lot, sixty-five hundred a month, hourly, hourly a year, I I didn't think it was gonna be that much, I don't even know what I did either. There, zero. Okay. Well, thank you. So I think that's what we're, I think that's what we're looking at, and that's why I brought it up, and I think, I don't know what the other departments that use or what they're reasoning for, it's just to reduce. That that the tedium of doing that. But I still have to do it.
And that's what my thought process was to efficiency. Well, I have a page, so I only have nineteen people that I enter hours for. But like Todd said, we use those time sheets for second vacations, so I do enter that for all salary. So if that import you know, imported automatically, that would save them or something.
As far as I know, I I can't use it cuz it doesn't get reported in, but you can cover all everything, sickly, bereavemently. Vacation, all of that, just boom, right in the solutions for you.
I think when we did that demo, it showed us how that would work and it would automatically transfer.
So the department is can look at their employees at any time they want to on this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And also, there's another thing that I don't use, just because. I think it was a recent development, I'm kinda slow to learn these computer things, but. You schedule. You know, if if someone wants to take a vacation, they can see who's maybe already got a vacation that day. So you gotta enter department's schedule that you can use, so, you know. It's, I think now in our office, what we do is, you know, ask around, you're gonna be gone in ten minutes. But there's a lot of things that even I don't know that it's capable of doing, but looking at it from the standpoint of just making it more efficient, you know, what's that word?
I have a motion, I second on the floor, are you ready to vote on the motion?
As long as it's clear, the motion that if the department wants to include that in their budget or whatever in the future, or that's something they'd like to move towards and not oppose.
Do you wanna amend your motion?
In the future, so they could be charged to our departments.
Yes. Right?
I would prefer if it was one bill, send it to IT, so we're not trying to split it by department, it makes it much easier than trying to split it.
Those would be out of your department.
Okay.
It would all come out of the IT division.
Yeah.
Right. If everybody's gonna want to track thirty people every day. By paper, wouldn't wanna get altered. Yeah, so this is our our department, if you just give their phone off, block in, block out, get on the website, block in, block out. If all the vacation at a sick time came across automatically, would that help you?
Yeah, that would save something. Well, so is it gonna be harder if some departments do it and some don't? Or to know who does what or not?
And whether he value in saying they were doing all these same.
Yeah.
Well, this, well, just so if you're not staring at employees, it is the exact same thing as doing the copy, it's just on a computer, that's the only difference. Some department heads want their employees to block in, block out, which is fine, but for the departments that don't want, it would just be exactly replacing the spreadsheet, so. Yes, they go on the spreadsheet, like I was here eight hours, I was here eight hours, I'm sitting eight hours, so there's not a change for your employees. It's just electronic, and then the department head also has to vote out a brief to authorize that that is correct before involves others, so. Trying to make it as easy for the departments as we can, but it is a significant.
So Derek, if we do not move forward with anything right now, it would stay same effect as it's currently being used, like Todd has it. But it's not able to be imported, right?
Correct.
So.
Yes, and I want, that's what I wanted to clear about, thanks for that, Mr. Stecker, because I can't import it to what they're doing, that that would require some other.
If we could send that four to six thousand to do that interface for the employees that have it already, or the departments that have it already. But I wanna continue using it for my department for blocking and blocking.
So I wanna make it clear that Carter's motion would limit Phil from using it for the his new employees, that would be thirty employees or?
No.
Plus eleven full time.
Eleven?
Twenty-ish volunteers.
So the volunteers would use the program too?
We'd have to look at the cost and see. And and otherwise I have to track them, they don't work every day, it is work as seen, so you do want that you're behind getting support. Yeah, because I don't wanna, at the end of the month, trying to go back and you're doing everything, I'd like to have an opportunity to look to the month, to show for time cards and keep my current style myself, is that the end of the month? That's the whole thing.
So Carter and Josh, let's clarify your motion before we vote on it.
What does it say now?
It wrote not move forward with additional time sheets off the air.
Can I amend that motion?
Yes, you want to.
Okay. I, my intention was to not make it mandatory, not to say no. But I. Leave as is unless departments wanna add it themselves, that's.
That's a whole different motion.
I know, that's, I know, and it didn't get worded right, so, so we can vote it down and make a new one, if if you want, but.
I I'd just assume vote it down and make a new.
I'll I'll call for a question, so we vote on it and go from there.
Do a roll call vote in reverse order?
Sharks.
No.
Stecker.
No.
Wacker.
No.
Matt.
No.
Black.
Motion did not, motion failed.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to make it optional by department. If they want to add this.
Does that include the software to convert it over? Because that's that's a key piece for forty-five hundred dollars. That's a one time, I believe.
Yes, there's two Bs, number one is the interface between time clock plus and solutions, that is estimated to be between four and six thousand dollars, that is a one-time fee. The time clock plus annual license is gonna be about sixty-five, well, between six and seven thousand, depending on how many departments wanna be included. Annual on.
So it's making two separate.
It should be clarified what you're including.
Right, cuz we don't wanna spend forty-five hundred dollars and then waste it. Yeah.
Correct, oh, correct, and then sixty-five.
My mind of working around this, but.
Would. Be twelve hundred less, cuz we're already paying for that twelve hundred dollars, right, so it wouldn't be as much of an increase.
But you'd have a forty-five hundred dollar fee plus a sixty, estimated six thousand dollars a year.
About a little over five thousand a year extra.
Yes, somewhere in the range, depending on what the department.
Right. Well, could. Could we table this? And get an accurate count of how many employees are going to go onto the system? So we can get an actual number instead of approving something and not knowing an actual number of what this is gonna cost for the employees, so. This would include the the jail staff and the EMS staff. So it sounds like those are the two that would probably go onto the system, so instead of having a hundred and fifty-two for the quantity, it would be significantly less and we could get an accurate. Cost of it and make a better decision there.
That's that's a possibility, but you were in the middle of making a motion.
Yeah.
Either withdraw that and.
I'll already, I'll withdraw my original motion.
So, thank you.
And then I'll make that motion to table this and. For the department heads to get an accurate number to Derek, so we can get it, get it more accurate.
I would, I would suggest a time, you wanna table, you want it for two weeks or something?
Let's do two weeks. Is that enough time, Derek?
Uh, yeah, that should be.
Okay.
And then then more information could be shared with employees and stuff too.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, I'll second the motion and then Melissa had her hand up.
Questions, so the the system, I told you haven't already, so are you the only one that can see?
Correct, it's locked out by department, so Karen would see her four or three.
And and nobody else can see her early.
Well, there's one midstreamer in the fourth. Software, so that person would be sad.
So when you bring it back, separate out, we, the forty-five hundred dollars to get the software compatible with solutions. And then the the other number and the number of employees and what that's gonna cost, cuz right now, we don't have those in front of us, but I'd like that separated out.
Yeah.
So that I'm clear when we discuss this, so if no other departments. For the sake of this discussion, all the departments come on board, the cost of accounting would be a one-time forty-five hundred dollar fee, so that those of us that are using it get that in. That's it, no additional. Add it to the additional annual, right?
That's correct.
That's that's what I'm getting, but I'd like it clear.
Yeah, I wanna get that. And I think that decision would be better made if we know, you know, we've got thirty more employees that are gonna be using this versus, you know. How many that we have on it right now, i- is it worth integrating that, or do we just save the money and just continue on with the system, you know, the way it is? Yeah, yes.
Yeah, so there's two, there's one, one-time fee for solutions, and then there's an annual recurring for time clock.
Two weeks.
Yes, we already have. There's there's so much.
He needs release time.
Right, that's the split, you just told, and there is the okay. I did show.
If even even if we did move forward, that there's gonna be setup times, they're not gonna be able to build the platform that fast. Solution won't be able to make an interface that fast, I don't think, so it's it's gonna be what it's gonna be for the beginning.
It would just be integrating it into our system. But it sounds like Phil already has a a pretty good number of of. How many employees he's gonna have on the system, so I think if we can get as close to that number, you know, as possible, then that way we can make the decision. You know, based on what the cost is for that.
I don't want Phil to have, start something, stop it, and then start a new program in one month is where I'm coming from.
Right.
So.
Yeah, we can move forward, we almost now, if that's okay.
Yes, definitely, don't, don't start it, start and then stop and then start something else, it makes no sense.
Okay, great.
Well, you're still gonna have, you're still gonna give the guy all the time sheets like all of us do, but.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah.
We could continue with the same format of time sheets for use, they have, and let's.
Yeah.
That and that cause big change to them, if you don't wanna do it all at once. It could make something goodbye and tell we made the change. Using the such kind of state format they have today.
Okay. Well, we don't wanna make their life miserable for that.
I mean, there there's gonna have to be something for them to switch over, but.
Yeah.
I guess.
That transition.
We can have a lot more conversation about this outside the board meeting too, so.
Yep.
I'd call for a question, so we vote on it.
We agree the motion.
Yes, so the motion was by Wacker, second by Stecker, to table this discussion for two weeks. For department heads to get an accurate count of employees, that would be on the program and the cost.
Do a roll call vote.
Black.
Yes.
Wacker, or I'm sorry, Matt.
Yes.
Wacker.
Yes.
Stecker.
Yes.
Sharks.
No. Motion carried, forty-one. More to come. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Tammy, your names on this next discussion decision?
Yeah.
Fifth Amendment of child support staffing contract.
And I put the equally along with the contract, they came from Jenny Almond, sent from our department house attorney, human services. Asking for you guys to approve that contract through June thirty twenty twenty.
Anybody have any questions on this? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve. Motion by Stecker, second by Carter. Any discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carried. We need a science section.
Yeah.
This is a payroll bid. Next, we have change in payroll pace here, Tammy, you wanna lead the discussion in this?
So I've been talking about this for a while, I think this has been an ongoing discussion for years and how to fix our payroll system, because. The way it's set up is employees are being prepaid for ten to eleven days, depending on how many days are in the calendar month. So after we did the payroll survey, the payroll survey came back all over the place, some people wanted, please switch our payroll to twice a month, some. Wanted to keep it as is, it was, there was no consensus at all, it was kind of all over the place, so. We kinda talked at department head meetings and a little bit here, that maybe the best would just be to fix the prepaid and not do any changes. To avoid hardship to employees, so. This was one suggestion, would be to give employees three months notice, so that they know they'd have a shorter time, shorter pay period. September, and it would mean that August, the month of August, they'd be paid, the month of August, like they normally are from the first to the thirtieth. In September, they would be paid from the first through the fourteenth, they'd be paid on the twentieth, so that would be the shorter pay period. Then in October, they'd be paid the twentieth, but it would be from what they fill their time sheets out for currently, which is the fifteenth through the fourteenth. So then we would eliminate prepaying and they would actually be being paid for what they filled out their time sheets for. I have been talking to a payroll attorney at Elizabeth's. At Gardner Income Company, and we've been having ongoing conversations how to make this as easy for employees as we want to, we're hoping to have another discussion. So if you, if you need more time to talk about our tech to employees, and fine with with tabling it, I have no, no problem with that.
There any feedback from department heads after you talked with your employees after the department head meeting?
Well, I, I don't know, I I talked to my employees and and explained to them and things like that, I think one of the main concerns is they need more time. A lot of them, or some of them, you know, they're, they don't have enough money set aside, because you don't want month, they're just gonna get half paycheck. And their concern is they just, they don't have enough set aside to cover their bills, so. The short discussion I had with. One of my employees this morning, and I heard from one, but she said that there's more than, more than her that are concerned about that, I think. They would like a little more time. They understand that did not, they should be paced up, and things like that, I believe, they just need more time and three.
Yeah, I'm the same with mine, I think universally it was frowned upon because of the the shortest time, three months, I mean, you know, when. You look at it from the standpoint of bills needing to be paid, creditors want to be paid in in three months. I think probably for quite a few in the courthouse, it's gonna be too short of a time to make that up, I think everybody understands. What's what's happening as far as why we, why the county's looking at moving that, because, you know, getting paid for the reported hours. Um, but uh, you know, it's just not enough time to to make up. Uh for those creditors that are gonna be coming on the twentieth of September. Uh, the second thing is, I think that there was a consensus that. You know, why, why are we doing, I understand the reason, okay, um, the fact that, okay, you didn't pay for the hours you report. But it's been going on for well thirty years that way, why not, I think is what probably should be answered. Uh, why is the push now? Cause I know it's been this way since I've been here, Deb's been here the longest in my office, and it's twenty nine years, and it's been this way. So that's that's the.
Yeah, and we can answer that, because um. It's not efficient, it's not accurate, it's, you know, I mean, we're we're not being paid for what we're turning in our hours for. And we're getting prepaid for for ten days, when somebody retires, that creates quite a problem. And I I think record keeping purposes, body purposes, I'm surprised that we've never had an issue, and to me, I have an issue with it. So.
And so, you know, I think in general, that's the feeling of, you know, speaking on behalf of my. Uh employees that uh it's just three months, not on time.
I have a issue with getting half paycheck. That's my issue. And to abruptly, to abruptly change it for the employees, I think is really not a fair thing. I mean, I've been here twenty three years, and going to once a month was kind of an adjustment for me from my other job. But it's like that abrupt of a change for everybody, that this is what we, this is what we rely on, these are our paychecks. And to abruptly change it is really hard, it's like, wow, like, how do I adjust that? So quickly, and I'm like.
How else are you gonna do it?
I I don't know. We don't, we we don't die.
So how much time are you thinking that would be a reasonable amount of time?
Um, I. Is it uh? See, and that was the one thing that I was trying to figure out, it was supposed to be a trial today, so I don't have a lot of time to think about this, but um. Is it a way that you could still maintain the the full paycheck by moving it to the thirtieth of the last day of the month? Changing hours reported. You're gonna get more of a paycheck than when that's converted.
I guess, Tammy, you can jump in here if I'm wrong on this, but I think. I think no matter how it gets moved, there's going to be. A short paycheck because we are prepaid, and I I don't, I don't know if there's any way to get around that. But I do agree, it's something that needs to be addressed, um.
So that way back when we started twenty nine years ago.
Yes, it's always been.
So we got a lot less pay twenty nine years ago.
No, you would have gotten paid ahead.
Yeah, but I mean, it would be a lower rate. So the the question then comes down to, you know, what can we do? I mean, can we research it more to figure out a way that's not gonna be as impactful on the employees? I mean, my 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 suggestion was if you move the pay date, which is not necessarily attractive to most, I know. But if you move it, then you're you're getting more, they're not fold, they're getting more of the paycheck. Which is a little easier to swallow.
But if if you move your pay date, you're. Like, if if you broke it down to your budget per day, so to speak, for income and expenses. You're still looking at that prepaid gap, no matter, that that would be an issue, no matter which way it gets moved, I guess, I don't. I mean, and we have talked about this for a while, but I don't know how else you could move it.
The payroll attorney's recommendation was to do, go to biweekly. Uh, biweekly paid periods, and then that would solve a lot of issues.
That wouldn't count, then you wouldn't have really any.
Right, and so when we did the survey, there was a lot of people that. Because of the way their automatic withdrawals are set up, do not wanna change the once a months, we got a lot of comments back, they do not wanna change it, so. I'm okay with anything, you know, I just don't know how we're gonna come up with a consensus that's gonna make everybody happy.
Roger, Chris, I don't know. Yeah, yeah, you're probably good.
The biweekly, it's a lot easier to swallow and adjust, you pay, I mean, that. Question a little bit, that's I came from a biweekly to a monthly, and it's a lot harder to go from biweekly to monthly, you know. But it is much easier to budget and move your your bills and your payments with the biweekly, knowing that. So that would be my consensus.
But then do we double?
Not certain yourself, the money is as well, going to the biweekly.
But then do we double our payroll if we're doing it twice a month versus once a month? Like, your your process would.
Is that a big deal, Melissa, to do biweekly?
Well, if you do time block software.
Yeah.
Yeah. Doug?
Secondary roads twelve times a year does payroll, biweekly means you're doing it twenty six times a year.
Yeah.
It takes Lisa two days to pay the ball.
Well, and you guys aren't being prepaid, so for you, i- i- it's.
But I just made you know, if you go to biweekly, these secondary roads, twenty six times a year, that's twelve.
The, if you went biweekly with everybody but the road department, can you do that? Cause I can't see doing the road department.
Well, they have that, right now, they're under union contracts.
I don't think anything.
That's that, okay.
What pay periods are, you, I have a feeling that if the. If one part of county government goes to biweekly payroll, the secondary road department will. Ask them for that as well.
So I get the one.
I I think we can, I would make more, there's a day through weeks, and you're gonna have six months. And then whatever, you know, they.
It's very difficult for.
Money aside, no part of that six month period to cover that.
The the problem with that is that you're gonna get to that six month period, you know, cause you're going an additional three months. That's gonna happen around the holidays, and that's where, yeah.
That's what we tried to avoid, so if we did, if we wanna clear that we did it at a time, but we did.
My point is you either do it now, or you're gonna have to do it in March.
Yeah, I I would agree with that, um, so. So for the employees who are concerned about three months, how much do you actually want? Like, six months, nine months?
Then and then you're gonna run into.
Well, and and we, yeah, we just, we just had that conversation.
Well, I I said March.
Now our next winter is spring, yeah.
Well, yeah, it probably not.
Yeah, if it's holiday, you gotta move it back till spring, yes.
Yep.
What were you saying, Tom?
I just wondered how that works at the end of the year. So your your last paycheck for the year would be?
Half and now.
They're prepaid.
I mean, for July, cause you can't, you're not, you can't pay on the twentieth of June, and then.
Yeah.
You got till June thirtieth, so then the July check would be. Would be on.
And that's what the.
That's what they're telling us, yeah, that's what they do now.
And I I had a someone. I know you sent out the information to him, which was very helpful, but they, you know, we can explain it a little more to them. I obviously did do a good job, but um if they could be explained to them a little more.
Yeah, I think the the reality is, I didn't, I didn't explain it to my staff very well either, cause I don't really know the reason. Why, other than it's it's, we're getting paid for fifteen days, and and that isn't gonna be reported until the next pay schedule. But it's still going to be worked unless they, you know, retire or resign or whatever, so it's still gonna be worked. Um, you know, and I think looking at it from the standpoint of of why. You know, I didn't have a good enough answer for that, or I didn't really know why myself. Uh, I understand, and I, they all understand, all the employees in the courthouse understand. Those fifteen days are, you know, prepaid, because it's, you get paid in the month, for the full month. Um, but uh, you know, it's, we heard it earlier in the previous conversation. And is it broke? And if it's broke, then we probably should look and fix it, if it's not broke, might fix it. Um, so, you know, I think the concept of it's broken needs to be explained better. Because the concept is well understood by everybody, it's hard not to miss those fifteen days that we get paid this month. Before the fifteen days of the last part of the month, that's understood. Um, but, you know, maybe offered, or maybe, you know. Um, I don't, you you guys have control of that, so you wanna do that, but I think an explanation. Uh, first, to explain to them why. And then try to figure out a way, you know, to to go forward from there and fix it if it's broken.
I don't think there's any.
If it's March of twenty twenty four, I think we should pick a date, time, and and set it, and then people have that much time to. Set ten dollars of.
Okay, it'd give me more time to talk to the little attorney, so that we can get more information out to the employees, so maybe they understand it a little bit better. Then then we can.
Well, then I agree to do the biweekly as well.
Yeah, I'm I'm off for whatever you guys wanna do, um, but I don't know what else, how to revisit it. Um, you guys are gonna have to tell me how you wanna revisit that, because I, when we did the survey, there is. People that absolutely do not wanna change it, so.
What is the?
Maybe that I change, knowing. Reason why you're changing, they're paid to that, it's pointing at all at once, these are your options, for people to understand it a little bit differently.
When is the next department head meeting?
It's always the first.
Just had.
So it would be July. It won't be July sixth, um, July thirteenth, probably.
Oh, you have a special.
So we can have a special time sheet, absolutely.
Okay. Um, I was gonna say, we can, you know, eat up the rest of our our uh board meeting here. Discussing it, or we can, you know, have that discussion at the next department head meeting, um. You know, pushing out that timeframe and figuring out the schedule, you know, a little bit more in advance, that would give you time to talk with the. The payroll attorney, um, and for the employees to understand it a little bit better. Um, I think we should table this until after the next department head meeting.
Would would we be able to do a special department head meeting after our board meeting next week? Would that give you enough time to have some conversations with them, and then have everyone here for that, so we can keep moving on this?
Yeah, if if the department heads are okay with that.
So your your comment is that you're leaving it open, this he'll do it in September, October, and November.
The, my, in my opinion. We either need to do it in September or March, um, kind of with what you had said before, I don't wanna do it. October, November, December, holidays, if we do it after Christmas. I'm not opposed to that, but I I do feel we need to do it, it's just. I I don't know, um, but if there's more questions that people want answered, I'm not opposed to having a. Special department head meeting and getting getting more information, more options out there, but. I don't know.
Do we need to make that in a motion to schedule that, or is that just something that we just put on the agenda?
We can just put it on the agenda again, if that's unanimous consent of the board.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is that the unanimous consent?
To add, to put a department head meeting.
That's fine, I don't, I mean, I just, people, you know, it's, it needs to be changed, because.
Yeah, that's my opinion, yeah.
Okay, so you want.
I've divided before, but it's the same thing, we can do it with adults.
You want me to schedule the department head meeting for your next week's? Put this back in the agenda for the following week?
The following week, yeah.
Yeah.
Y'all have to. So it'd be two weeks.
Okay. Yes, are you guys okay with that? And I'll see, would it be helpful if I asked if our payroll attorney could be on the phone for that during that?
Probably, probably would be a good idea.
Yeah.
See if he's available, please. Doug, you're up.
Everyone, good morning.
Sure, let's take a.
Go ahead. We'll we'll, we're gonna take a minute break.
A minute?
Yeah, you got a minute.
Stand up.
Guess I'll read, I got a question for you, um. The recycle bins here in Algonquin, by Algonquin Publishing, eh? That's the transportation, or they take care of them, or?
Transportation does.
Yeah, yeah, do you? You do that in the other communities, do we do that?
No.
We use the county, just Algonquin?
Well, those are intended to be for. People in rural outside of the city limits of Algonquin.
Okay. Oh, so those are there for people in the.
People in Algonquin are supposed to have curbside pickup, and I believe by ordinance. Curbside pickup includes curbside recycling.
Yeah, okay, that's. Not many people do that, sure.
I don't know.
I guess I know.
But that's, that is, it's been a problem a long time.
Well, I guess, is there any? I know some counties will. Will have. One in a rural community, like I was just taking, for example, you the transportation had one in, I mean, it would take. Forever to fill that thing out.
I think it's also funny to realize that work supervisors do contribute twenty five thousand dollars to. The. The transfer stations operating, and that is intended to be the transportation.
Yeah.
Of those rural recycling boxes.
Good.
So any additional. Boxes, we would.
Need to budget.
What I mean, it's gonna cost them, cause you're gonna have to purchase things, and you're gonna have to transport.
Yep. I just didn't know how that worked.
Right.
Yeah. But I'm sure transportation of of a rural community, you know, you take one up to Lone Rock, it's gonna take a long time to fill that thing up from right there. Algonquin, but you don't, you never know, yeah.
I mean, we're. Mile and a half to transfers.
Right, right.
But they are created service areas.
Yeah, yeah.
Doug, we are up for construction in the right of way, I see we had one in our folder?
Uh, yes, there are requests, actually, three, uh, we have a. Interstate power line, I think, is that the first one, interstate power line? Or is it?
Yeah, interstate power line.
Interstate power line, they are requesting to uh remove and overhead electric service at. Two thousand six two hundred fiftieth street. And replacing that with underground. Or would prove of this request?
I'll make motion to have first that request.
A motion by Wactor and second by Carter, right? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those favor, please say aye. Post, motion carried.
And the second request is from Vision Power Cooperative. Um, they are requesting to. More underneath of Plum Creek Road, uh, there is a new. Storage facility being constructed, uh, called, it's a LLC, Coyote Hill. So this would service the new. The new storage facility there, and I would, again, I would recommend this would be boring under. And then placing underground electric in our road right away, P fifty four Plum Creek Road.
I would make the motion to approve, do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Stecker. Second by Stecker, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Close. We are up to Reich Tree Service.
Okay, uh, this would be. An application by Reich Tree Service to spray road right away. Um, this is in connection with, uh, high voltage transmission line that was constructed a few years ago by ITC Midwest. Uh, there's a couple of Level B roads and there's some trees that are actually growing underneath of the. Power line and they'd like to spray the road right away to, uh, prevent the trees from. From growing there, there's two locations, both of them on a hundred ninetieth Avenue, one is, uh. Right to the west of your house, Roger.
Yep.
Um, between three hundred sixtieth Street, three hundred fiftieth Street, and the other is between two hundred ninetieth Street and three hundred Street. Um, I know there are some trees in those areas, I would, any help in keeping the trees in the road right away and then obviously. From their transmission lines helps, so I would recommend that the board.
I'm going to approve spraying of the trees on the road right away.
I'll second.
I have a second with Mr. Stecker, any discussion on any of this? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried unanimously.
This one, we ask for signature. The board chair and a few little test to that, please, Tammy, I appreciate. Very good, thank you.
We are up to our time with the county engineer and zoning administrator.
Um. The bridge up in, uh, Wakin Township, they are planning to place guardrail on that tomorrow. So that contract will be, construction of that would be fulfilled today on the resourcing projects. Uh, P twenty, north of Highway eighteen is, uh, the Cold and, Cold and Place Recycling is, uh, being completed. We also, uh, have a bridge south of Taitanka, we're having a pre-construction conference next week. On that, so I expect that construction will begin on that, uh, soon. Um, working on getting employees replaced. Um, do you have some equipment coming in? Trailer today, the trailer that we approved last week, and I think a couple of maintainers will be coming in soon as well. It's kind of everything that's going on.
Satisfied with the trailer?
I haven't seen it. It's actually, it's on its way, if it's not here right now.
And was the, the process getting mechanics, was that going along?
Difficult. It's. Into the end, where Bagel County is hoping for a payment right now. It's a difficult procedure.
Okay, you said you had some candidates applied?
We did, yes, we interviewed three. I still, I asked for some background checks, I haven't received any yet.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, Doug. You got anything for the board?
That's all that I have, I guess, I don't have any questions to make.
Collins family says thank you, or, or your Tom Collins, where it lives there.
Okay.
Over by St. Joe.
Or, uh, speaking of road right.
The road was, yeah, he was happy the road got created. It would be over there for the, some gravel on the road had been played again, he was, he was happy though.
I've heard some good comments about, uh, crack filling.
Yeah.
It's kind of neat, it's. Yep, they were appreciative of the.
I drove over, the only bad thing last Friday, I drove over a spot, I wish they were still in. That happens, we just got to find, keep our maps for next year.
Yeah.
But we can't have perfect roads. It, it would ruin your reputation.
I, I produce some data and I, we need to, uh. Toot our own horn, but Cusick County does have the smoothest state of violence. Ratability index. Our roads were rated at seventy-five and the next eighty and. Rare to have under a hundred. I should give that information to or dial Department of Transportation. That's sad, but it was recently determined.
Oh, we knew we were good, we just didn't know we were that good, Doug.
Well, we have, we have the best rating. Maybe the wind was blowing out of the rector. What a good job, I think.
Yeah.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Uh. Can we go ahead and have discussion with the county auditor and do the?
Yep, yep.
We have a completion hearing for D four open ditch FEMA affairs and. As we just discussed, we'll have the department head meeting after our regular meeting. We also have approving the Cusick County Public Record Policy and authorizing placement on the website. Other proposed amendment planning and zoning ordinance, or discussion on the proposed amended planning and zoning ordinance for hazardous pipelines. Approve and sign project hope proclamation, just our other. Regular issues.
Things you're gonna talk about the pipeline, you're gonna have some different setbacks in mind that you're gonna bring up, or?
That was something I'd like to discuss, and as a board.
Yeah, so have something.
And not just setbacks, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Have something in mind before.
Yep, I, I do.
Everybody, I'm saying, everybody have something in mind.
Yep.
Cause otherwise we'll just waste the discussion period, yeah?
Yeah, and I'll, I'll get to this more when we get my turn for discussion, but these, uh, packets would be. The transcript from most of the first day of the council meeting, um, so. Tried to, and document that, save that for everyone, so I'll get the second day printed out, but it's a heads up for everyone.
I read quite a bit of it online. It's all put me to sleep.
Yeah.
But. I was gonna give it to Josh, he said he had trouble sleeping.
He's got one too.
Okay.
First, the bakery drinker public records request, everything's been sent to them exactly, you know, so Derek is. Working on, he's still working on gathering all that, there's tons of thousands of records. If he gets them all downloaded, then we'll try to go through and make sure that we're not sending anything that's confidential, and try to weed out what's done. So, um, but they have everything else.
You haven't printed that?
No, they, you know, no, we'll have to go on.
Okay.
So they did okay, so send a portion and then?
I don't know that they okayed it, what happened was, uh, on, when I sent them the records, I told them that the emails were not ready yet, Derek was not here Friday. So I told them I could get them to them as soon as we could get them, there wasn't anything I could do because I didn't have them and I wanted them to have what I didn't have, so.
They respond to that at all?
She said that was, so it wasn't the attorney, it was just the secretary, I think I thought we did.
Customer stuff from them, yes, sir.
So, um, and then the next thing we have is, I know we even talked about using the current payroll attorney we have for HR and payroll. I did get an invoice from Renee Von Volker, and she's the one that we've used for HR in the past and for our union negotiations. This bill that I got is for March of twenty twenty-three to March of twenty twenty-four. Before I paid it, I wanted to make sure that you guys want to still have those two firms, I know we've talked about not having Renee do it, and just having. Um. Taylor's and Cooney do it, so I wanted to talk to you and find out, um, if you wanna have two firms, or how you want me to handle this.
I've seen you using them to firms, so.
Why you have separate people doing the same?
Yeah, it's just duplication, it's very, it's.
Yes.
We've always had Renee, uh, do our stuff before, and we've been using Taylor's and Cooney a lot more with our payroll discussions.
Renee's probably not gonna be doing it for much longer anymore. But we need to be thinking about succession.
Want to put it on the agenda for next week, make a decision?
I can do that.
And then we'll make an official decision on it, is that all right with the rest of the board?
Yeah. I don't, I don't know if we need to have a more in-depth conversation about HR as a whole, because I believe some counties just use Taylor's and Cooney, like. Exclusively, but I mean, that's, they don't have an employee for HR or anything either. Um, and I believe from the numbers I heard, I don't, I don't wanna throw a number out, be wrong, but it's fairly cheap, um.
Cool, Cooney?
Yeah.
If Renee's bill for the year is five thousand.
But it's less than that, I believe. But I don't remember if that was per year, per month, but I know.
That's her bill for the year?
Yeah, yeah, I don't, so I, I don't wanna throw something out and.
Taylor's and Cooney.
Miss quote.
We'll discuss it next week.
I'll put it on.
Yep.
Yeah.
Hey, Jack, do you have any meaning?
Uh, no, not this.
Please. Josh? I had the third judicial district, Department of Correctional Services, um. It's a pretty interesting meeting, uh, we were doing a lot of discussing about the realignment and, um, the state kind of taking over, you know. Um, spending control and, and things like that, and the transition to just being an advisory board versus being a board of directors, um. We did make an adjustment as to when we're gonna meet, um, going forward, we will only be meeting two times a year versus four. Um. Uh, there's, there's a bunch of different discussions on, so Clay and Dickinson County, um, are spinning up their, their drug courts. Uh, basically, it's, it's, uh. Keeping the, you know, uh, those that were charged with, with, you know, drug offenses. Out of the prison system and working with community members and stuff to get resources to those people to help them, you know. Um, move on and, and.
Start a new age.
Make better choices, um. Yeah, I think the biggest impact that we've discussed was the, you know, the, the funds. You know, being moved to the state and, and the process that they're gonna have to take moving forward for procurement, um. Having to deal with, you know. Purchasing, uh, vehicles or, or projects or anything like that, you know, that has to go through the state now versus, you know, being handled locally. Um, there's. Quite some mixed opinions on, on that, um.
Did anybody bring up home rule?
Uh, it was discussed. It was discussed, um, there was also a mention of. Spending the twenty-eighty, but, uh, we didn't vote on that or anything, so, um, uh, I'm sure that won't be the last time it gets brought up, but. As of right now, we're just kind of displeased with how things happened and, and.
I think in general, they've been very displeased with the state judicial history, but correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, you're right on that, but it's not just them.
No.
There's, there's been a number of things with the state.
Yeah, yeah, it's. But it's the. The process that we're gonna be dealing with coming. July first, when everything goes into effect and.
Keep us informed, yeah. Mr. Stecker, do you have any?
Yeah, uh, Tuesday night, we had EMS Advisory Council meeting, and I had asked Phil if he could swing over for this in case there's any questions, but. Um. Talked about, obviously, the transfer of assets agreement that we've discussed here was a. Sizable piece of the conversation, um, talked about the policies and rate scale and different, um. Payroll options with the scheduling. So Phil had done some work on all that, but, um. The big thing I wanted to bring to everyone's attention here was discussion about the North Hub and. I don't have the date off the top of my head, but Phil and I had attended the, I believe it's the last Sway City City Council meeting. And. The discussion about the transfer of assets agreement was a two and a half hour conversation. Um. I would not categorize it as a good conversation. At the end of it, there was a general consensus to move forward with the concept of the agreement, but there was. There was very clearly hostility in the room, um. And it was. Not, not something I was acceptable with, so I wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that. I, I have serious concerns after that meeting, so. I don't, don't know if you have any questions for me, Phil, or anything about that, but.
Is it gonna affect how we're going to do ambulance service for the county?
I think it already is to some degree. Um.
Yeah, part of the, part of the tension up there is, is causing, it's part of the reason why we're losing volunteers out of the North Bay County. So. Without the volunteers, it's hard to. Hire enough staff to, to run that.
No, we, we don't have the budget for that.
Yeah, so. We, we can stop that and, and, you know, get volunteers active again, but that's, that's gonna be an important part of that piece up there.
What seems to be the biggest issue, the funds, or is it just the, the structure?
Well, I, I, I would say the funds was discussed for a majority of the time, but it was. Personality issues or differences would be how I would describe that, I guess.
Yes, I would agree, it's best way it is, but.
Okay.
How, how do we legislate personality issues this morning?
Well, I guess my, my statement at that meeting, um, was. This won't work if we don't have a team atmosphere, if, if we can't have. A common agreement to work towards a positive goal for the whole county, this won't work, um. I, I don't know that there's any, any other way to describe it.
Back to transfer of assets, was there a? Yes, no, maybe, but there, uh, it can't work without the transfer of assets, so I'm.
No.
Yeah, I'm a little perplexed here.
So, we, we did present, uh. What we had, the draft that we had. We went through that in quite detail and did, um.
Line by line.
Line by line, word by word, basically, uh, change ands to ors, ors to ands, uh, talk detail to God. We did go back to Todd, we did meet with Todd, um, Jacob. Eighty from the city, Kyle, myself, we did meet with Todd. We do have, we did have to come up with a new revised version from that meeting, uh, that, that version is out to both communities now. It is on Algonquin's agenda for next Monday. Might have it back here on Tuesday, um, I told Sway City to. Let them know when they scheduled the meeting to have their side, and I have not heard anything back on that yet, but that will be so. We're gonna continue and proceed with, with this Algonquin City Council, and bring it back here.
And I think one point on that, um, currently, the agreements are combined. With Sway City and Algonquin both listed in the same agreement. It, does anyone on the board have any issue with splitting that, so that?
No.
It's a specific agreement for each community.
Hey, have you guys gone through the city of Albona and the agreement yet? Were there reviews on it? Is it?
Yeah, we, we, we reviewed it, we've actually had it to a, a city of Albona workshop. I went through that to workshop, um. I guess they Jacob City Master is involved with, with. All in the, the agreement that he's part of the advisory council as well, so. I do not foresee any issues with that. Monday night.
So the, the reception was a lot better with the city of Albona, um.
Very different.
Yeah, so I would think that it would probably be beneficial to keep the ball rolling to split them. Um, if Sway City's gonna have. You know, issues with the, you know, may have to deal with that on a separate basis, but to keep the ball rolling for the city of Albona, I think. Right, right, I mean.
We have, we have to turn a key on seven two, so.
Issue we have is on these agreements. We're dealing with an advisory council, two city councils, a board of supervisors, so. By having this joint agreement, now, you know, hindsight. I wish it was split in the beginning, because every time we change one word within the agreement, that has to go back through. Our, our, it is, you know, it is what, June sixth today. To come back through a whole set of boards again, you know, now it's July sixth, uh, it just takes time.
I think.
Which is gonna happen July second? I, I'm not gonna guarantee we're gonna be one hundred percent complete, because there's gonna be things to clean up in July, there's probably gonna be things to clean up in August that we haven't thought of, but. Everything else is good, border pharmacy is good, they're coming here Thursday, Thursday morning, both border pharmacy be here, so. I'm confident we're everything done except this transfer of asset agreement and cleaning things up as we go above and beyond that.
My way of thinking, we can start on the second of July with what we have and we'll clean up. Whatever we need to do with Sway City after that, is that? Wrong opinion or? So let's just move forward and get it done.
Just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that and, um. I think, I guess, splitting, in, in my opinion, splitting the agreements. Does not change any material aspect of it, it's.
Dealing with it on one.
It's, it's two separate communities, but the language would all be the same, except. One name would be pulled out and it would be on its own, language duplicated and vice versa, so I mean, it's. Fairly simple concept, in my opinion.
Get it done, Phil. We don't have an option.
Well, yeah.
Anything else?
I have other stuff, but anything else for EMS? Okay, thanks, Phil.
You guys, thank you.
Um, yeah, then I touched on before with the. FEMSA meeting in Des Moines last week, um. Yeah, the printed out copies that y'all got is the transcript, most of the transcript from the first day. I have the transcript from the second day that I've not printed out yet, but I will plan on doing that yet today, so.
I was gonna say I talked to this morning. And, uh, no more.
I printed that out.
And no more new, uh, easements have been signed in Cusick County in the last week or two, that's just what they have, so. Just so you all know that we're still on the.
Same numbers.
Number that we had before.
Twenty-three and forty-six.
Yep, that is my change.
Seven percent or number?
Percent.
Percent, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, twenty-three and forty, forty-seven.
Yeah, I talked a little this morning, adding track, yeah, so that we're, we're informed.
Yep, that's.
I was gonna go ask him the same thing, so.
Anything else, Mr. Stecker, other than carbon?
No, there's, there's a lot with that and, um. Yeah, I don't have all my notes put together real cleanly yet, but I do have some notes from that and we can have a. More in-depth conversation next week on that, so.
Good, we're gonna take a break until nine forty-five and then we'll start drainage.
Do we need that much for repair request?
Nine fifty, alright.
That'll give us at least a thirteen.
I said nine forty-five, we'll get here by nine fifty then.
Whatever.
Good, problem drinking this much water, it's. You have to use the restroom.
So.
When it will get fired.
I was dead.
Right, Stacey Newhurst?
Yeah. I hear you.
Tyler, if you want to get set up or whatever, we just got repair requests to do quick.
Morning.
Yeah, you're fine.
Those are smugy. You don't wear gloves since the.
I used to. But, uh, I wore glasses seven to twelve, fifteen, thirteen. You wear an axe now or? No, I mean, I used to.
Mark, you got some repair requests? Would you like to share them with us? Thank you.
There you go.
Pass them all down to.
I can get mine to him. You want to start or do you want me to?
Oh, I can start. I got one here on WK thirty-five eighty-nine. It's number fifty-six. The washout outlet pipes to locations is by Red Shooter. And I got another one, number fifty-five. It's on one fourteen. It's a broken tile needs repair.
Um, I got fifty-seven and Sway fifteen, broken tile for Robert Thompson. Anderson Tiling already repaired, I'm guessing, Mark?
Yeah.
Okay, so that one's done. And number fifty-eight Ramsey, section six. To investigate lateral eleven tile for Jogo. She's email request. And it in his email. Says DD four lat eleven deals with restricted flow of a thirty inch county main that transitions to a thirty-two inch county main. That transitions to a sixteen inch county main, which was not located at the outlet. Think that's in the folder for everyone to look at.
I wrote names on it.
This has been. Looked at, I don't know how many times over the history and I think.
Don McGregor dug it up twice.
The maps are not necessarily clear in this area, but. We could send it to McClure Engineering to review the history and the maps and. Do stuff if you guys feel appropriate. I did have conversation with Dan and Cham Putson about this. We had discussed some stuff that way, but I know this is not the first time this has been brought up.
Well, every time we dig it up is dead flat or that grade. It's not going to change it unless you're going to do an improvement.
Yeah, I. I guess from everything I know about it, there's not a thirty-two inch going to a sixteen. I don't know. Any contractor or anyone a hundred years ago that would have done that, so. Thoughts from the board? Well, uh, I guess. I'll, I'll recommend sending it to McClure and having them get back to us.
That's. I don't know why you're including the engineer. You're just running off our goddamn call.
What do you expect us to do?
That kind of isn't one, okay? Check it out. It's the damn road pitch. It's a certified property. I got a lot of acres tied that time in one. I got legal rights finding out why it is a front. If I have to, I'll get court working to do it.
But you're proactive, Joe. But at the present time, I think you're right. Send it to McClure and get his opinion on what it is. That's our job is to take care of requests, so we'll send it to McClure. Mark, you taking that set?
Yeah, we can entertain a motion to uphold their request if you're ready.
Second, Josh?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor for the supervisors to take care of their request. Any discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post motion carried unanimously. Anything else on drainage before we go into our hearing at ten o'clock?
Uh, I guess I'll just make comment. Did you fix that CRP and Wesley A. by Belina's family?
Yep.
That has a ton of issues. Cody passed it. Cody Dornberg passed this together. I mean, it's, it's fine for now, but. I think we need to look at down the road.
Set by Belina's is grow?
Yeah.
Yeah. That weekly.
Well, I think we're going to need to look at doing something more extensive to that section. In the near future, otherwise the same issues are going to happen every.
You got any idea how far we'd have to go?
That's what I, I need to figure out from, from landlords out where you would. How far you go with that, but something needs to be done there.
What is that? That is twelve inch tile. Do you remember? Top of your head?
I don't remember.
I was. Was thinking that I was a twelve inch, but it needs to be turned into a non-perf.
They're just, there's so many, and tree roots are a big problem.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I don't, just, I'm just making you aware that I think we need to look at that at some point in the future. Fix issues long-term rather than.
Who would you, uh?
Do you know the township in second?
West, it's west, west.
Close it.
Yeah. Turned in a request re, for your last time.
Well, there was one from last year, but did Belina's turn it in or, okay, but I had calls from several folks around us.
Why don't, why don't you grab ahold of a couple of them and have.
I've signed a request. Phone shows twelve inch diameter.
That's what I.
Ten, ten to fifteen, so yeah, it's in that ballpark.
Why don't you grab a couple?
No, Mark, Mark Seabird.
Yeah.
Is one of those landowners there and all eat, damn it, your family farms next to that too, won't you? Thank you for buying it. So there's a number of.
See if you can't get a request out to do a major repair on it and put an unperf in there. And, and we'll have a separate request to.
Yeah.
If you're looking at, uh, if you're looking at distance, I can find that quick. To go through the CRP.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
It's shallow. But the only way you're going to fix it is for non-perfs through there.
Right.
Just to the edge of the CRP. Would be about twenty-four hundred feet.
You need from the whole length of CRP.
The whole, the whole length of the CRP. Rough, rough figures anyway.
Yeah.
Geez, what's the one person now? Can't think about talking about it. I, what is this non-perforated twenty-four or twelve inch pipe right now?
Wait, what it used to be, uh.
Actually.
Like.
Here.
Thirty-five maybe?
I might.
If I'm, if I'm. And that may be, that may be strong, but that's just off the top of my head.
I might be able to find some numbers.
Eighty-four thousand, so. Yeah, so you better get some signatures. It is ten o'clock, so we're going to open up to hearing on annexation and a reclassification of hearing DD four lateral twenty-eight.
I'll make motion to open the hearing.
I'll second. We will call both, please.
Flat.
Yes.
Now.
Yes.
Wacker.
Yes.
Satter.
Yes.
Here.
Yes. Public hearing is open. We will turn it over.
All right.
Take it away.
So, thank you. Thank you very much. Tyler, kind of compression of this air report make here in town directed to investigate a. Annexation and reclassification of District District number four, lateral twenty-eight after the completion of the project. How project that was done this last year. First, there was an annexation report that was filed same time as the reclassification report. This annexation report that is flat displayed here. Was determining all the areas of benefit for the new. I say new, the, um. Changed watershed of lateral twenty-eight, lateral twenty-eight originally. Still on this lower portion follows this alignment, but it used to continue on to the upper section of the watershed. There has been a relief ditch that was cut in this location here and. Essentially bisected that facility's watershed. There was also brought up for consideration in the reclassification. A private main represented by the dash lines there that has been taken into account in the reclassification. The annexation is simply to express all the lands that were determined to be receiving benefit. The reclassification assigns what those new benefits are. Any of the areas in pink are areas that were outside of the original. Classification scheduled for this level. And anything that is just the aerial photo is what was originally or what was already on that assessment sketch. The area in pink that is being proposed is one hundred fifty point five two acres. Of the breakdown calculation here, which is included in the. Board. These areas, much like the reclassification, are based off of the watershed model. That was derived from LiDAR. The LiDAR model is aerially obtained elevations. Which are, it's light from a plane that shot to the ground, bouncing back up, then according to the amount of time that takes. That gives relative elevations, which are displayed on this map. The advertised accuracy of which is one point every square meter. So approximately every three feet by three feet, there's a point and that's accurate to within six inches. Plus or minus three inches on its elevation. So it's a very powerful tool when evaluating these watersheds. What the computer model does, it takes information, we give it the LiDAR, the facilities. Anywhere water can, can pass, the culverts, field crossings, anything like that. And it evaluates every square meter with every square meter around it, so on and so forth, develops this watershed. Model. This model is the same one that is used for reclassification, which is why it's. Most economical to evaluate annexation at the time of reclassification. Any questions on the annexation?
Tyler, do you have paper copies of your report there?
I don't have paper copies of the report. I do have, uh, methods of parcel reclassification.
Okay.
To hand out for that. I could, I could get any interested parties, uh, paper copies.
You're good. Keep going.
Okay. Sometimes in the digital age, people just like to, to see it up here, so, uh. Yes, so that is the annexation report. The acres and the recommendation for annexation into the lateral twenty-eight watershed. Of the, for the LiDAR data, uh, this would be. Admittedly, it's, uh, the, the new data flown in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. It's not yet available. This would be the twenty-eleven. Not, not off the top of my head. I just know what I could, I could look at all that. I can find that information. I don't have it with me right now. I know they were, they did it. Uh, either, uh, there were some sections flown before and some after harvest. There are before planting and after harvest. It's, it was all of bare soil. This doesn't, uh, they, they didn't plant when they were cropped because LiDAR does not handle vegetation well. It'll reflect back off of that. It's the same with, uh, large bodies of water, the light can't penetrate, uh. A water surface, so to come up with one. Stable elevation, but as far as, uh, your, your black. Your, your bare soils, uh, your roadways, everything like that, it very powerful. It would, it would be. Al- almost impossible to go out and actually get physical survey of the whole, the whole area. We tie this in with physical survey, find it to be. Even more accurate than advertised, but the state puts the, the level of accuracy on it as a, as a precaution. So.
Any questions for Tyler?
Sure, there will probably be more in the reclassification, um, which, which is the next step of this. It's just, they are separate reports, so they're handled separately.
Any, any comments from the acres that you brought in?
I.
From the landowners?
I have not, Mark, was there any comments, any objections from anyone? I have not heard anything. No.
So are we ready to close the public hearing then?
Do we, um, do you want a separate hearing for that or?
Well, it should be, it should be separate.
Separate motion.
You would have to, you have to close this one, but I think you would have to open the reclassification hearing and everything can be motioned on.
Well, being that we didn't have the reclassification in the original motion to go and close session, no.
Well, it was, I guess I thought I was hearing for both.
Yeah.
Is it?
The motion was for both.
Yeah.
We did get the motion for both, okay.
And the reclassification.
Yep, awesome. I can't hand these out to anybody interested. These are, that's what I handed out there and I got some. Board is interested, we may have to go.
Don't mind, that's all right.
Yeah, we can share.
Taken. Sorry, I didn't, I didn't put.
Many, many of those, um. The, uh, the second portion of this then is the reclassification of benefits for. Again, raised the number four, level twenty-eight. The reclassification of. Benefits was. The, uh, number of reasons. One was, this had been reclassified since the. Split between the upper and lower portions of the watershed. Uh, two, the individual facilities of the. District watershed were not on individual schedules. And three, there had since been the construction of a private main that landowners. Obviously, and understandably so, wanted credited for with the construction of the new. Main as a district project. So those were three main factors that went into the review of district. Facilities and the facility benefits.
So when was it broken out?
That.
Do you remember?
I have that number. I know when, see, I, I may be able to get to the report on. In the sixties is, if my, if my memory serves. Uh, it, that relief ditch has been there for a while. I could get the actual date. I had the actual date for that, just not.
That's when the relief, relief ditch was constructed, it was reclassified at that time.
They split it into two pieces, the lower and the upper. It wasn't broken down into any, any further. Uh, like all of the lab, the other laterals sixty-two, sixty-three, the sub-laterals of sixty-three and sixty-four. It wasn't broken into that, but it was broken into two. Classification, because we had not done any work on that upper portion, we did not spend any, any time. Or consider that as part of the reclassification. This was just for the lower section that had worked. Performed on it. As part of the reclassification, there were schedules developed for the laterals listed here, twenty-eight, sixty-two, sixty. sixty two, sixty three, sixty three A, uh sixty three B, sixty three C, and sixty four. All of those schedules exist in the reclassification report. However, it is only lateral twenty eight that is anticipated to have any levy run against, the other ones are simply for future maintenance purposes and they are examples of what a levy would look like on those facilities. As part of the reclassification, the commissioners' report, there are code sets out that there'd be an engineer appointed to it, as well as disinterested landowners within the county. Myself as the engineer, along with Tim Struger and Rich Rosenbauer were the commissioners for the reclassification. Our reclassifications are all data-driven, there's little room for objection, however, as the code states, the report commissioners is uh the values that we have submitted to the board as trustees. The final say that of any of the values ultimately goes through the trustees after this hearing and having heard from landowners. The reclassification process uses LiDAR, which I've gone over with the annexation. It's the elevation bands displayed, reds being highs, blues being lows, the color created between them being that general relief. That creates a flow model, which are the blue lines here, as well as some catchment areas, some watersheds that all flow to their own individual flow path and original and eventually all the way out to the end of the district. This flow model is what we use for all of our lengths, for our uh proximity factor, which is how close you are to the facility, displayed here, reds being highs, being the closest to the facility, and greens being low, being further away from the facility. Meaning you have to use other facilities or money to get to the facility, you don't benefit as immediately as those right with the facility right running through them. Like all of these factors, it's taken to a per parcel layer, this being the proximity factor per parcel. Proximity is actually the second of the factors, the first is area, how much how much of a parcel is within the red watershed area? Not just because you have some area in that your whole acres are considered, it's just those that are displayed here in color. So then second is the proximity, third is the facility use factor, how much of the facility do you use, again, displayed here. Uh highs, a hundred percent of the facility used in red, and the less of the facility you use, the closer to a green and eventually the dark greens that use very, very small amounts of that facility, taken to a per parcel layer. The second bit of data, side of the LiDAR that is used, is the soils, which is the USGS Soil Survey Maps. For the soil class, uh characteristics, they are given a classification in the range of four groups. High, low, wet, and swamp, swamp being the wettest, highs being your driest soils and the range between them, going from getting a factor of twenty for your high dry soils. Far less need for drainage than displayed as the darkest greens to your lows, which are your fifties, your wet soils, which are seventy fives, displayed in orange, and the swamp soils in red, getting a factor of one hundred or assuming that they are saturated as a soil can be. This is also taken to a per parcel layer. All of these factors are taken to a per parcel layer because they are all at the end multiplied together. All the factors are taken times one another to get the units of benefit, the mathematical amount that every parcel benefits from the facility. There is also a land use factor, or a runoff factor. This compares all subdivided pieces of land, roads, railroads, all of those to agricultural land, agricultural land gets a factor of one. Anything that has sheds water faster gets a factor higher. The hard surface roads, for instance, get a one point six, meaning they shed water sixty percent faster than agricultural land. Because these are multiplied together, giving ag land a factor of one, does not change what their relative benefits to one another is. Also, in this case, because there was a private main installed, there was a factor given for the uh a tiling factor, essentially. A reduction from the benefits of the facility based on the benefit received from the private main line. The areas in red here are the catchments that were deemed to be being immediately served by the private main tile. And they were given a factor of point three, which would equate to a seventy percent reduction from the main district facilities. This is common, this is a common value in our reclassifications of areas that have been served by private tile. Uh in, it is a value based on permeability rates, rainfall amounts, and, and runoff rates. It's a calculation of in any given rainfall event, and, and it's rounded because it, it, it varies either side of this a little if you look at all the actual data, but it's the amount of water that would immediately soak in and be served by that main as opposed to the amount that would ever have the chance of running off and pooling in the lower areas where it would be uh picked up and served by the main tile. So then that's where the seventy, seventy percent immediate into the soils and picked up served by the private main, thirty percent of all total rainfalls are deemed to be runoff values. That is then given to a per parcel factor as well, all used to create the units of benefit, which is then used to create the classification. Classification is described as a percentage in the code, it's something I wish it's, it's some antiquated language because it is in a percent, and that bring people out when they see their percentages and they think that's their percentage to the total benefit. What this is, isn't that, what it is, is it's a percentage of the ratio of how a parcel benefits compared to the parcel that benefits the most. Classifications is everyone's units of benefits divided by the highest units of benefits multiplied by one hundred to get a percentage, which is then displayed as classification. So, for a parcel that, for instance, this one here, that has a classification of twelve point zero six percent, doesn't mean it's benefiting twelve percent of the whole district facility. It benefits twelve percent as much as the parcel with the one hundred percent class, which is one right here, which from all of the factors, that's where we typically see the highest percent class is most of the facility, near the upper end of the facility, a full-sized tile, even though this one's this one's longer as opposed to your traditional squared forty. Uh that area is, is awfully wet from having a review of the soils. So it, it all pretty well falls in line, plus then with those uh tiling factors, seventy percent reduction on top of that, that's where you see a lot of the, the greens show up in the maps uh near the, near the center. That process is then, uh what we also, we give a class per acre. Does not take size out of it, so you can see actually the parcel by acre, when acres aren't considered, the parcel that benefits the most is actually the parcel that is on the very upper end of that main, or the lateral twenty eight facility. We provide a, an assessment based on a hundred thousand dollar project cost and then an assessment per acre based on a hundred thousand dollars again. And then the process repeats itself for every additional facility in that watershed. So this, for instance, is the lateral sixty two proximity factor, so those that all run right along that that lateral sixty two, getting the highest proximity. The use as well. Wetness factor, all based off the original soils, their runoff. And then there was also a consideration for the tiling factor as well, because of how that main tile uh actually branches off at the, at the top, it, it forms a Y and is serving and helping relieve more than just the lateral twenty eight, it's also all the other laterals that in parallels, this tiling factor was used and accounted for as well, so it isn't just the lateral twenty eight. And so on and so forth throughout the rest of the facilities. Now we're displaying sixty three. Then on to I think we, we have multiples, well, now we're, now we're on to sixty three A and, and on and on, and the process is the, the same. Again, this information was, these maps, all of this information was gone over with the commissioners as well. They had the opportunity to, to vet it, review it, make sure that it was fair and equitable. And, and had done so, have, have signed and submitted our report. The last thing I'll say about the process is that in its capacity here, it is very repeatable because it relies on uh LiDAR data and soils data, if all of this were, were wiped away, I think we could produce nearly identical results based on re-obtaining that information. So, that is very quickly going through the reclassification process. If there are any questions, I'd, Mark, if you received any information on this one as well. Other than that, I can open it up, or those are forty acre tracts. Yeah, yes, then, then those are, those are the uh parcels as they are displayed on the transfer bus, so they are, it's, it's forty acres or small. It, it's right, it, it's as they uh appear for tax purposes. It, it's as they're broken down by parcel number and if you do uh yes, yes, those are all, yeah, they're all I, they're
They're all, they're all in the report with the legal.
Yeah, and they're, they're all as they would appear on the county's GIS, that's we get them, we get them from the county's GIS, so that's, that's where all that information is from.
And I noticed that there's some parcel that are less than forty acres.
Yes.
That would be, talk about the boundary of the district.
It it has, so in our report, there is the legal descriptions for all of those parcels. So yes, there are some that uh that specify what the boundaries, all are the simplified quarter porters, just to give their
And, and it shows the benefited acres within those parcels.
Yeah.
It's not necessarily the full parcel, but it's what's benefited within.
Yes, the, yeah, this has the benefited acres, the classification, the assessment, and then the ratio to total cost, because it's hard to derive anything from those classes. We provide a ratio of total cost because that's independent of the whole uh classification system, that just tells you what your share in the district is.
There is no legal description of all.
There's no legal description for what the, what the waters, well, based on what the legal descriptions are and the benefited acres, that would determine what was in and, and out. Coupled, coupled with, we also provide uh these plants here that show what the watersheds are. So between those, those two bits of information, between the actual tabulation, this map here, you shouldn't be able to decode and decipher what is in and what's out of the district.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's helpful to use both, I would never just turn a blind eye to one of them, there's a reason we include both of them in the report, and that's because they're supposed to be used in tandem.
And I don't think we should.
I, I feel like, I feel like you're fishing for me to say something here. I'm not, I'm not sure that I
I, I think, I think
I'm being waved off here, so that's uh
There's a lawsuit in regards to this question.
So that, yeah, I'll, I'll uh
Yeah.
Decline to answer.
Yep, thank you.
Yeah.
Just, I could say something, uh a lot of information fell to, obviously, but I don't think enough benefits given to the private main. Showed on there with your LiDAR, that our farm is if not the wettest farm, you can see the lowest farm, I should say, and the largest farm in the area, would need to be the most watered. So that means our private main, which say, be generous, say only ninety percent of our water goes through our private main. We're getting rid of that much more water for the rest of the district. I think it's pretty obvious how big of a benefit it is because that project was thought up. Yeah, I talked to all of the neighbors around, including the two neighbors who wanted this repaired done. They didn't want to be a part of it, now after seeing how much water we really take away with our own tile, how they want to benefit too, but they want us to pay for their benefit and our own. Think it should really be considered, taking ours down far, because the the water we've taken off of the county facility is I don't believe it's a challenge to end up here. I, I, you showed very well, I can give you your numbers, but if you're actually out there, see the water, you saw it ten years ago versus now, it's water we've taken off the facilities. Top question, I think more benefits we show over that.
And that's, that's where I get into the, this is what, what I've presented here and, and submitted. It, it falls in line with not only what I've been, what I've been trained and taught, but it, it falls in line with other reclassifications that we have submitted to, to the county. Now that doesn't mean that um ultimately, it is the, the trustee's decision on, on what that share of the benefit looks like. Um however, to be consistent within my reporting and, and our reporting, this is the, this is the value that I and the commissioners at the time felt comfortable going with, just based on Just based on past precedent. I, I'm sure it's making a, a world of difference out there. Uh, I don't, I don't doubt that at all. Um. But when I, when I look at everything that I, that these have been based off of. This is, this is the value that I have to go with. And it, and it's, again, it's a, it, the report is a, is a starting place. It can also be an ending place, but it doesn't have to be. That.
Yeah, I, I didn't mean to say you're hiding.
No, no, I, I'm not.
The number, but I just.
No, I, I, I don't say, I don't say any offense to, to any of this. This is what these hearings are for, is for a discussion. And uh, let's, let's talk it out. Let's see where, where, where things go. Um, so I.
Yeah, and I, I'll, I'll say one thing quick. Um, appreciate the comment, obviously, but. I think one of the points you made earlier, Tyler, was um. In regards to other reclasses and stuff, and I know we've had people. Request to go to another district because their whole farm goes that way, et cetera. And there's been. I believe off the top of my head, there's been kind of seventy thirty splits because seventy percent would be subsurface going through their tile. Thirty percent could be surface runoff that could still go to the other district. And um.
And that, and then again, that those values are based off of. Um, kind of uh experimental with. The permeability rates.
Yeah.
Rainfall amounts. Over certain sized storms, depends on what, what your soil types there are. There, there's a lot that's, that's goes into what are boiled down seventy thirty split. Is.
I, I think the thing here is with the. The way the land lays and the way the system was installed, with lower depth pumping station. Um, all those factors of this specific situation that I'm aware of, I think it's. Similar yet different in that capacity.
I'm gonna say in simple terms. So when you reduce it seventy percent. So it's, you got ten gallon of water. Three of our gallons are gone into the whole system.
As, yes. As a simplified.
You know, you talk about surface runoff from our farm. Look at all the water we're taking, neighbors, it's going. I, we're taking more water on from neighbors that are. People are shedding off. All of, all the runoff comes to our farm and it sits lowest body. Is that half a gallon?
Yeah, that's, that's very.
Yeah, that's a point.
And that's.
I mean, I went from this all start, let's sit down back in. And I talked to Lori Johnson first, she farmed the farm with the tiles and. And told me to talk to uh. Uh Lawrence. I talked to her and I talked to probably three different occasions, but she ended up showing nothing to us. Andrew Bauer got a board and he wanted. Well, do you want us to go through his farm, yet another farm that he saw? I went by here, nothing was done all year. I thought I'm just thinking that I can do this, I talk folks. And so I went that way and I never want to talk because I won't do it. So if everybody were on like me then. About the year today, then that. A lot less money, what this costs, you know.
Do you have in mind a, a value that you feel is fair? I mean, the, the, the technical protocol of this would be if, and if even just now. On a scrap of paper and I can provide that. Your, your, your vocal input is all good, but the, the correct ways actually. Would be for a written objection of what you think. The, the value should be, and all it, all it really needs to say is that you feel your. Uh, tile reduction factor should be. Of a certain percentage. Sign it, uh, submit it, and then that would be something for the, the trustees, the board is the trustees to. Consider.
Remind us now what its factor is.
Yeah, it is a.
Seventy thirty, right?
Seventy percent reduction.
Right, yeah.
The, the ground is benefiting thirty percent as much as uh it would if that line wasn't there.
Tyler, uh, you have a question? Otherwise, I got a question.
The pumping station. Factor. Is ground could not be drained without that pumping station. Am I correct?
That, that is right. To, to gather the ground from those, from that Y.
Right.
To get that to a point, it has to be pumped up and out.
So, did you take that into consideration on your seventy thirty factor?
The seventies typically. Would, would typically only account for gravity fed systems.
That's what I'm talking about.
Right.
So I, is a pumping station, does that demand different?
I, I, I would concede that that. Does probably warrant a, a bit of an additional. Compensation of, of reduction because it would reduce to an extent the amount of runoff.
That's where I'm, that's where I'm.
It, it would change the dynamics of the system.
Yes.
That's where I'm coming from. So is.
I, I.
Fully taking that into the reduction.
I, no, I, I feel based on that, if there were. Uh, a discussion about a, a further reduction, that. Would, that would be the most warranted.
So I, I have a technical.
Oh, we, it, it, that's all it happened.
I have a technical question. If there are any changes made to that factor, is that something that can be included in a motion here today? Or do you need to go revise your report?
The, how we've made these, this, okay, so that, that's, he is requesting a ninety percent. Uh, what? What I have seen done in the past on these is. Uh, an acceptance subject to those changes. Uh, I go. Click a few buttons, make the changes. Uh, read, get the updated values to. To Marge and it would, it would essentially go through the system like that. Um, if you wanted to see what the actual values were, there needed to be a continuation.
Okay, but it could be subject.
If, if, if what is decided on is. If be, if, if everyone is okay with making, accepting subject to those changes, that can be done. Ninety percent seems a little strong, just. Just off the top of my head, but it, it's.
Yeah, um.
I'm finding one. Uh, we can't make that decision right now in the whole session. We're not.
We're, we're during the hearing. We're in, we're in the public hearing.
I'm sorry, said the wrong word.
Is there any new or further comments besides what's already been said from the public or the board? Otherwise, I'd make motion to close the public hearing.
I, can I get a comment?
Did you have something?
Well, I just was asking, are you guys gonna make a decision today or are you gonna wait?
We can't do it while.
We can't do it in the, in the here.
Oh, I see.
It's a technical, yes.
We can't make decisions while we're having the hearing.
Yeah.
But I can ask you a question. Would you be satisfied with less than ninety percent?
Say, say that again.
He asked if you'd be satisfied with less than ninety percent of a reduction. That's a, I mean, that's what they asked for. So obviously that's what they're looking for. Um.
So, you want to close?
I, I'd make motion to close the hearings.
Do I have a second? Do a roll call vote, please.
Glass?
Yes.
Now?
Yes.
Whacter? Decker?
Yes.
Jerks?
Yes. Discussion on the public hearing of DD four twenty eight.
This, this.
Polls in front of us.
For action, do you need something for the annexation first? Need a separate motion for that?
That's, yes, I, I believe so because the classification and the areas and everything are subject to. The annexations of approval.
Yeah, I'd make motion to accept the annexation report.
I'll second your motion. Any discussion on accepting a report? Do a roll, a roll, please.
Glass?
Yes.
Now?
Yes.
Whacter? Decker?
Yes.
Jerks?
Yes. Go from here, Tyler.
Hmm, next we're on the reclass and any potential changes.
Right, yeah.
We have a.
We have, we have the objection, which, which requested ninety percent for that factor. I would make a motion to. Accept the reclassification report with modifications of eighty five percent for that factor. For the um private tile factor. Would that be how to label that?
Yeah, yes, it would be. As opposed to the seventy percent, it would be to an eighty five percent as that motion.
I have a second to Mr. Decker's motion. Discussion. If this motion passes, do you want to be on the agenda again to bring the report up to date? I, so we can accept it.
If you would, if you would feel comfortable with that, um, else was cows, was it to accept?
Subject to those.
Subject to that.
We could have, we could have a preview of the numbers and have it viewed that way, but this would be approving it.
Yeah, it says both.
Yep.
It would be approving, but I'd like to see the numbers.
And I can, uh.
Just bring it back.
Just next week I could come back in with updated reports and.
Yeah.
And have printouts for everyone and everything like that. That would, that would be a nice way to see it through. It wouldn't be necessarily a. A continuance of this, you know, the hearings already been closed and everything, but.
Yeah.
A week's time would be plenty to have these done and.
It'd be nice if we could see the report.
Yes.
As amended.
Yeah. So for, for discussion sake on this. With the individual circumstances of the situation, obviously, those have been talked through to some extent here today. But I think the, the aspect of the pumping station and the other factors in considering, I think that kind of justifies. Splitting the difference between. Um, seventy percent and a full reduction there. They still could have water coming into the district facility. On very, very heavy rains potentially. So I don't think they should be completely removed. But I do feel it is a different situation. As would be handled on a case by case basis as we are here.
Any other comments?
I'm basing my decision on the information that was presented. Well, I don't agree with your opinion. Yeah, the hearing has closed.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. Do a roll call vote, please.
Glass?
Yes.
Now?
Yes.
Josh, would you like me to repeat the motion or you?
Yes, please.
Yeah, uh, I'll let you repeat the motion, then I'll give them a short description. So go ahead.
Okay, the motion is to accept the reclassification report with modification of eighty five percent for the private time factor.
Reason for that is during our discussion, which you missed. We had conversation about the fact that they have a pumping station. Which changes the dynamic of the situation and was not a factor in the numbers that were presented. Is that fair, Tyler?
And the surface grain is very limited in.
They, they are, they are pretty well the lowest. Area in the district topography wise, so they are actually also taking water on from the neighbors as well as.
Okay.
Their. Uh, and that, that's my motion in a little background. So. It's up to you to vote if you're ready.
Yeah, I'll vote yes.
Decker?
Yes.
Jerks?
Yes. I'll see carried unanimous. Anything else, Tyler?
That's it for me. Thank you all.
Bring amended report in.
I will, yeah. One week's time, I'll be back with the amendments as uh.
Yeah, I don't know. You need to be on the agenda and just bring a report in and, and get it to Marge.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I could just, I can swing in, let everybody know that it's done and.
If you want to pop in for public discussion, we could.
Yeah, yeah, that should, that should be binding enough, right?
Yeah.
Alright, thank you.
Any discussion from?
Oh, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Anything else to come for the good of pursuit county? Hearing done, I have motion to adjourn, Parker.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Thing about Stecker. It is. Ten fifty about. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Post. Adjourned.